All right, we will call the meeting to order for the Brookings County Commission for Tuesday, July 25th, 2023. Please rise for the pledge. Next on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission agenda. For an item not listed, there's a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during this agenda time must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. No commission action will be taken during this agenda item, and a requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. And we do have one person signed up, Jeanette Gibbons. Come forward, please.
And I'll continue to invite everyone to go see the movie Sound of Freedom if you have not yet seen it, started here on July 3rd, still playing. And today, of course, is cheap movie date, so grab a, grab a friend, grab that special someone and take them with. Five bucks each is not too bad a deal. Okay, as I considered what I wanted to talk about this morning, a lot of thoughts rolling around in my head, thinking about things we've shared with each other, things about, thinking about things that have happened in our community. And for me, the things that happened in my community, my awareness probably started about three years ago, three and a half years ago. I think I was pretty oblivious to the greater picture of what was going on in our world, right down to our community level. And, you know, we've tried all kinds of things with each other, and, you know, we kind of set up our camps, this side and that side, and, you know, different tactics have been tried. You know, coercion, trying to bribe people, trying to convince people that our side is right, using common sense, using facts, which of course are kind of loosely defined by which side is talking about facts. And even on a grander picture, war, you know, we've battled each other, worldwide. People have fought each other, for what? And if we go back and analyze some of those wars, we might not even really quite understand really what was the cause, or whether it was justified. So those things don't seem to be working very well. So what if we do try something different? And I have some good friends in South Africa now, that I've come to know over the last year, and their tactic seems to be one of love. And, you know, we hear the cliches, we hear the love songs, we read the Bible verses, love is the answer, the greatest of these is love, love conquers all. So I have just a few quotes and a few words that have been written by other people that I'll share. This one by Jimi Hendrix, "When the power of love overcomes the love of power, the world will know peace." This one is unknown, but I really like this one. "If we could spread love as quickly as we spread hate and negativity, what an amazing world we would live in." So let's get it started. And this one is by Miguel Angel, "Our next pandemic will be love, and it will spread like fire." And then this note did come from my friend in, in South Africa. She writes a few words of her own, and then she shares a quote, and she states, "Pronounce the words, 'I love you.' This creates wholeness so complete and magical. When one loves and allows to be loved, it heals at all levels of oneself, and balances the body, mind, and soul, cleansing and freeing from all darkness. There are many different kinds of love, connecting us with our soulmate, brothers and sisters, with everyone, and the universal vibrations." So this part she quoted from her friend, Michelle Price, "Love is the highest vibration known to the human, love for everyone and everything. Love is changing the world, awakening all souls, and giving everyone a chance to create heaven on earth. And so it is, love and light, Michelle Price." Love is the answer. We, we can't continue on the trajectory we've been on for decades, centuries, millennia. The answer is love, and we know it. We, we learn it in our Bible verses, we know it in our heart with what we feel for each other, and with those people that are very special and close to us. But why aren't we close to everyone with that connection of love? And probably the hardest part of this recipe of loving everyone is looking at ourselves, looking at the darkest recesses, those shadows in ourselves, and being able to forgive ourselves, and to love ourselves completely. And then it becomes much easier to love everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, is there a motion to approve?
Most approve.
Second. Okay, discussion, additions?
Adding an exec session in accordance with SDCL 125-2. One personnel, three consulting with legal counsel, four contract negotiations.
All right, any further changes to the agenda? All right, in favor with the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. Consent agenda, which includes the minutes, travel education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorization, human services report. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion, changes? Here none, please call the roll.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number six, approval of claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Most approve.
Second.
Discussion on the claims, comments. Here none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwal.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Department head reports. We'll start with Brian.
Apologize in, but with the speed of getting my updates, I didn't get a lot of these updates until yesterday or late last week. But starting off with, Country Club box is complete, it is open. The Bruce Bridge Rehab Project, they were working on the grading and widening for the guardrail last week and continues this week, looking at milling late this week or early next week, and followed that by paving. And then we need the installation of the guardrail done and the signage, and that should wrap that up. And I will keep you guys up to date when that, those items are happening. 34th Avenue, we're Brookings County, 21. Work is substantially complete in Phase 1, which is from 20th Street North to the intersection of 8th Street. We have a walk-through tomorrow morning at 6:30 with BMU, myself, and the subs that are going to complete the remaining work. 44th Street South, or County Road 12, and Phase 1, which is along our county road there. Paving lift, second lift, yesterday on Phase 1, progress meeting was held at 10:00 AM yesterday. Walk-through is Thursday morning of, on Phase 1 at 6:30. And Western Avenue and 44th Street South, there will be a small open area, temporary millings at the intersection, that will be posted at 25. That stretch will be opened up, and the Monday, Phase 2 will begin, which is along County Road 77 north of the Escurbs. So Monday morning, that's happening. And then, once Phase 2 is completed, Phase 1 will be shut down again to remove the existing. And that small area there, where it's going to be left as millings, there needs to be a manhole upgraded, because the existing sewer ties in to that, and they're going to be getting all the new tied in to head down to the water sewer treatment plant. So that's the update on that. Oakwood, they started milling that last week also, and there's a detour on that off of a township road, 204th and 464th, to head in from the east side of the state park to get to Oakwood. And aside from that, Brookings County Shrews took advantage of the fair weather last week, and we completed several patches on Brookings County 40 and 42, where culverts were previously replaced. Brookings County Road 38 was closed yesterday, and BX Civil will be here late this week to begin the repairs of the bridge. And we had some pretty heavy spalling, they're going to help us out with some concrete work, and modify a concrete end block for a guardrail tie-in on that. And then later in August, it sounds like we're going to be getting that paved with our paving project. The spinning stop signs that you guys had requested, that Marty and I work with, we did get all those put up. I'm sure you guys maybe have seen them around the county. I didn't get a chance to upload the map, but I do have a map here of stop signs that the sheriff's office identified, and I have sent, we had paid the invoice, but I, I sent that to Stacy just yesterday. Also yesterday, correspondence was received from Claims Associates on our roof repair for the highway shop, and we're working through that, trying to get the contractor scheduled. That's been approved by Claims Associates. And finally, on July 17th, I sat in a webinar for the big, big bridge grant update, sorry.
All right, questions, comments, Brian? All right, thank you. Sheriff.
Morning.
Morning.
Sheriff. Just a quick, we have 41 inmates currently. Last Friday, the US Marshal Service brought us five, so we're up to seven, so our contract's for 10, so we have three more coming. And again, we'll see how this goes, and if our numbers stay down, if they need space, and we have it, I'll probably go over that 10. Right now, the biggest, you can tell by the stats here, that Moody County, I have eight current inmates from Moody County, so that's, Moody County keeps us with, with somebody most of the time. So 147 on, on the 24/7, so that keeps us busy. Also, we're still trying to, got applications out for, for deputy sheriff, I'm still one deputy to, to be hired and so forth. And, you know, looking at some recruitment things, I guess if you want to say, is, I reached out to some other agencies on what they're doing, and, and I've discovered that so far, two, two counties have lifted their residency for deputy sheriffs. In other words, they can live outside the county. And the city of Madison just lifted their residency, you had to live in the city of Madison. And, and the reason this came to attention is that I have someone that's on another department within a half hour of Brookings, and he's interested in a position, but he doesn't want to, this particular person doesn't, you know, established in his community and so forth, so he wondered if that was a possibility. So actually, I reached out to HR, and I, I have one policy there for you. I have nothing, I have nothing in my, in my policies that says they have to be a resident of Brookings County. We did open it up for one individual that was in Arlington that, that I had. So I just bring it to your attention to see if you guys have any, anything, it's kind of been a kind of unwritten policy with me, that you have to live in the county. But, you know, maybe we have to, you know, do some things for recruitment to, to think about that. So I don't know if you guys have any statements, I kind of blindside into you with this right now. So just something to think about. Anybody got any quick?
Sheriff, do you have anything in policy for response time?
No.
Once they're notified?
No. The ones I reached out to have a half hour, get to the department within a half hour, is kind of the norm with other agencies. But I've, I have nothing written.
Yeah, so if this employee will be on, they would obviously come to Brookings, be at the, check in at the sheriff's office, and then go from there, or leave their place possibly, and start patrolling on the way here. How, how does that work when they're coming from a larger, longer distance, I guess? I mean, if they were in the county, they could probably just start right there, and they're in the jurisdiction. This one is not, and then they have to get here. How, how would, how would you handle that?
Well, it's a good question. I have enough that live in county that, you know, as long as it's not an emerging, the, the thing is, is that if we have anything that requires, requires a briefing or something, we would probably meet at the sheriff's office before we went out, you know, except if there was a, a active shooter or something like that. Because then you'd say everybody goes to that location. So other than weather, that was just my biggest concern, is other than weather, you know, my guys now that live in the county, I have two that live in Volga, I have two that live in White, you know, if something's going on, they can respond right, right away. So there'll be, I would, I would have, you know, that lack of quick response time, yes, if that's your question.
Just, so this individual, or again, this is a scenario, but I know you're talking about a certain individual, they would take their, the county sheriff's vehicle with them, and then park it at their place when they're off. If an emergency would happen, that would be, like, say, heading their direction or something, how often do, do they then all of a sudden become on duty on an emergency? Or don't they?
I guess I don't know.
Well, I'm just, they have a vehicle there, and they're not necessarily on duty, they're off duty, and an emergency happens, where there's maybe a chase, or something like that, or something that would happen. Do you call them, and, and then activate them, and say, hey, we need you, they're heading this direction, we need your help? Is that something that happens, or if they're off, they're off?
No, that happens quite often.
Okay.
It, it happens quite often. And I'm not looking at this point to let that person take their patrol car, because there's some other things, too. If they're responding over the speed limit in another county to get to my county, or get to our county.
Yeah.
You know, you got to look at accidents and things like that. And so I'm not looking at this point that they would have to leave their car probably at the county shop, and drive their personal car to the county shop, and then get into there. So I would lack that immediate response for that particular person. Does that kind of answer your question?
That's understandable, that's why I was just kind of, didn't know, when you leave the county with, or county vehicle, how does, now all of a sudden it changes the jurisdiction a little bit, and changes the response times, and it changes a few things.
And that'd be something I just, that would be my worry. You know, by this policy, it says that an emergency vehicle could, you know, leave the county, but I worry about response, speeding and that type of stuff in another county, you know, to get here. Yeah, so.
Sheriff, it, it was kind of the case, but deputies that get off, like at 6:00 AM, are they the ones subject to call if something happens, like halfway?
They're not, they're not subject to call, no.
Okay, they're not, they're not the first ones that you call?
No.
To come back in?
No.
Okay.
No. The sergeant does a good job with this, you know, a lot of times when we do callback, is, what's, what's really helped us is going to 10-hour shifts, because I have an overlap for a couple hours. And, and that helps, especially when the weather is bad on the interstates and, or other places, then I, you know, I, I have an extra person. And the only time I'll, you know, if someone gets off at 6:00, the only time I'd call him back in is if there was really something going on, that I needed him. Otherwise, we, we, you know, check with the, we either have an officer come in early from the, you know, from the next shift, or stay late, and those types of things.
Yeah.
But other than, there's nobody that's, they're not on call.
No, no.
And even in the little towns, the two deputies that live in these towns, they're not on call.
No.
But if there's a domestic, and I would say the highway patrol is, they're not, they don't, they're not up to all the officers either, and they have so many that are off doing special, you know, like now they're all going to, to Sturgis, you know, so there'll be hardly anybody around, and so forth. So.
Yeah, I, yeah, I probably.
And the little towns are backup, you know, basically.
Yeah, I probably misspoke when I said on call, but meaning that if you needed some help, those were the deputies that you might call back in.
Yeah.
But nobody's ever on call, they might be subject to call.
No.
But just the ones that you might call back in, or, or call up the shift before, that's coming on. Yep, that's what I meant by that.
We'll try to catch them before they get, you know, before they get in the shower.
Absolutely.
Every once in a while, that does happen, though. We, we ask them to come back out since, because something happens.
Yep.
Are you subject to that at all? Nobody yet has applied, that's not a, I just had an inquiry about it, so.
About something we can, we can discuss, yeah, look at. And right, considering the fact of trying to, the options are not very many out there. We used to have a lot of applications, now we're struggling to find a few, so.
So I hope I answered your question right.
Yep, you did.
But, but I mean, within reason, I mean, if, if it's a half hour, you don't want it to be an hour, or something like that, response time, so.
Yeah, I got to think of the best, what's best for the county in response time and stuff. And, and so there, I would have to probably develop some policies to make sure that, that, you know, I don't want someone living an hour away, and, you know, and those types of things. So, you know, if a person does that, you're kind of opening your door to, to, to this, too.
The other counties that you visit with sheriff, did they have something written, it's got to be so close to, to the county line, or something like that, or?
No, not that I know of, and I didn't really go through there. There are some other counties that are letting their deputies take their cars to where they live, you know. I guess I'm not open to that at this point, just the fact of, you know, if I do have an emergency, and I ask that deputy that's living a half hour away, I, you know, he's, you know he's going to speed to get here. And I just, I worry about the accidents in another county and that. Okay, the other thing is, this quickly, I also put out that National Night Out, this is a national program through the, throughout the whole United States. And two years ago, actually, it's Stacy's sister that started this in Volga. She, it started out just as a block party, basically for this night out. Now, the, the Brookings Police has done this for several years out at Pioneer Park, and I know that Commissioner Jensen and some of you commissioners have, have went out there to Pioneer Park. And so this is not to replace that at all, this is just, Stacy's sister reached out again about doing a block party, and, and blocking off the street in front of her house, and the fire department had been contacted, and to do, you know, a water display, and things like that. Well, we decided that we probably just, you know, maybe make this event bigger. So actually Sergeant Murfield went to town, and went around Volga, got a lot of sponsors. There's also a teacher at Sioux Valley that's, that has an illness, and we're going to do a, a benefit for her, is that the Valley Restaurant's going to cater a meal, and a free will donation. And the businesses in Volga really have stepped up, and I want to make this a, a nice evening. So the city's allowing us to block off the street, and, and we're going to have a, a lot of events that are going by this. And again, this is, has nothing to do, I also have a deputy going to the Pioneer one to represent my department in Brookings, too. But this, like Sioux Falls Police, they have several of these throughout the city of Sioux Falls. They have block where they have, of course, you know, Sioux Falls is a lot bigger, and they have districts and things like that, so there's different neighborhoods that are doing this. They just don't have one big one for the Sioux Falls. Where Brookings is small enough, they can get by with one in the city of Brookings. And so we, like I said, we, we see how this works, and then next year, if Volga wants to do this again, we'll probably do this, but we'll probably reach out to White and the Elkton, and try to do one in each community, maybe on a smaller scale in the other ones. But we're going to see how this works out. And like I say, people have really, the businesses in Volga have really stepped up, and, and want to make this a, and what it is, is, is to get to know your, your, ones that patrol your community, and first responders, and get to know each other, and, and also have a fun night, and also do something good with the, with this team more, that she's, she's, like I said, she's a well-liked teacher at the, at the school there, so. And this all, you know, like I said, actually got started with Stacy's sister, and, and it just kind of went to this. So I think it's, I think it's a good deal. Any questions with that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff, one quick question. Marty? Any updates on the Aurora Corner stuff with the state?
Actually, Larry, Mr. Johnson, if you want to, they talked more about 2024 before they do anything else, aren't they? You know, I was surprised that the traffic solar light came up, because I didn't think that was scheduled for 2024.
All right, Lori. Be it noted items, notes, items for the minutes, the auditor's account for the treasurer, highway expenditure report, May and June, payroll and additive totals, and register of deeds statement of fees collected. Yep. And Richard?
Good morning. Mr. Hill is on his way back from attending the NACO convention. Responded on last Wednesday to the spill over by West of Volga there, which turned out well. We have our meeting coming up in June, August 1st, and we also have a joint jurisdiction meeting with a couple items on there. So, and the plat coming up was approved unanimously, so that's all that I have.
A question for Richard. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Number seven. No scheduled agenda items, so we'll move on to eight. Regular business. Letter A, action to approve resolution 23-28, a plat of lots, two, two B and two C of Block 1 of Country Club Estates in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 20, Township 109 North, Range 50 West, and the 5th Primoridium, Brookings County, South Dakota. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion, comments?
Yes, this was approved unanimously by the zoning board on the July 10th meeting, replating at the two lot, one lot back into the two lots out by the Brookings County Country Club.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Progman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B, action to approve resolution 23-29, a local federal bridge program resolution authorizing the submission of applications. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion.
As I mentioned in my report, I sat in on that DOT update and any off-system bridges, so basically township road bridges are going to be 100% federally funded if they qualify. Each of these structures do qualify. There's $25 million in FY 2023 and $25 million in FY 2024. And it sounds like it's gonna be for 25 too. These are our structures that we had identified following that meeting. They are outlined in our five-year plan. These do not count against our bridge grant cap. So like I mentioned, each one of these, if we would receive a grant, it would be 100% federally funded.
Do we have to then do the project and we get reimbursed, or are they gonna do that 75 upfront?
Since it'd be federal dollars, the DOT would administer bid letting, design, the whole gamut.
Good, okay.
They do the engineering also?
Correct.
And so is this gonna be, you know, we're, we're asking for six, is there gonna be a scoring system similar?
There is a scoring system. The scoring system, the brunt of the points is based off of bridge deck condition, which is 50 points of that. And then it breaks it down similar to what the big grant eligibility's are, such as detour length and that. These are our highest scoring ones. We felt that we tried, we better try to apply just because of the short amount of time that each county and the state had to, to adjust to this. So we're wanting to get our names in the hat.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Progman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C, action to approve resolution 23-30, a bridge improvement grant program resolution authorizing submission of applications. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion.
There wasn't many changes on the big grant side. The big was, or the, the large change was on that federal side. So any of these structures, you know, the two on 471st and two 10th over by Elkton, they are on system. And this would just be preliminary engineering.
So preliminary, just the engineering part of it?
Correct.
Yep, okay. All right, any further discussions? Questions for Brian? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Progman?
Aye.
Letter D, action to approve agreement 23-43, a State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for Rehabilitation/Replacement for Local Administration, PCN 09GT. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion, comments?
Sorry. This structure we recently received in 2023, 2.7 miles north of Bushnell on County Road 25.
So then for budgeting purposes, we're looking at this one to get rehabbed in this year or next year?
Well, according to the agreement here, if you look at the term and B, the latest we could do this project would be 2027, so I would anticipate construction probably somewhere in that 25, 26.
All right, any further discussion? Comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Progman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E, action to approve agreement 23-44, State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Improvement Grant Agreement for Rehabilitation/Replacement, Local Administration, PCN 09GU. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval?
Second.
Discussion, comments?
We received this grant at the same time and this, this structure is .9 miles north of Bushnell on County Road 25. And that has the similar date, so I would anticipate the construction in that 25, 26 area.
All right, Brian, your comments?
Brian, do you feel they'll do both these structures same time, or?
I believe that's the anticipation to try to cut down on mobilization costs.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen?
Aye.
Hostler?
Aye.
Vanderwall?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Progman?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter F, action to approve call for bids and plans for new highway shop in Bruce that was destroyed by the Duray Show on May 2022. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, comments?
I know at the previous meeting, we had discussed this and sitting down with Lee Lee Designs was determined that this structure does not need a architect. And I just asked her to assist with putting plans together. We have it laid out in there that the county would do the site work and preparation of the site and the contractor would be responsible for what's in the actual building.
Further discussion, comments?
The only thing I brought up before is that Bob's office would be inspecting it at intervals, correct? When the construction takes place?
All right, any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Letter G, action to approve a call for bids for the courthouse roof replacement project. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion.
So I met with Design Arc after their presentation at the last meeting, kind of in anticipation of the ask to try to get this project done yet this fall. They reached out to several contractors who do this type of work and would be most likely to bid this. And there was, I believe, only one that had availability yet this fall to get this project done. And then just due to the timeline of having to advertise and bid opening and whatnot, and then contract approval, we're not looking at probably mid-October before we have a contract approved anyway. So I guess my recommendation would be to allow for the construction to happen in 2024.
Comments, discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Letter H, action to approve request to fill vacancy for a full-time male correctional officer. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
Just due to a resignation.
And I'd like to make a comment that we've, we've gotten like 14 applicants and so that's really stepped up, so. We did some different recruiting on, online and different things, so. We're pleased. I think we can, we have some good potential candidates.
Good. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Letter I, action to declare items of surplus property to be disposed of. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion, comments? Jenna?
No comments, other than just a list of items. Most of them are coming from the IT department. Other than, I think there was a few that are coming from the BCOAC, just looking to dispose most of them. Stacy, if you scroll down, I think you can see there's just a couple items here that we'll, we'll try and sell. So we're looking to have that auction probably in October, or not October, excuse me, August, mid-August.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Letter J, discussion on ordinance number 2021-04, an ordinance establishing the requirements, fees and regulations for the issuance of alcoholic beverage licenses within Brookings County. So we have discussion here, so.
So what's happened is in our ordinance with special event licenses, our life, our ordinance says that we, and I think, I know why we have the ordinance in there. Essentially what our ordinance says is that an entity can only request up to three special event licenses per calendar year. We've had an entity now reach out and request above that amount. This is due to needing, wanting to serve alcoholic beverages out at the Bennett Barn at that, at that venue. The commission can set the number of special event licenses that an entity can request in one calendar year. You can do that under statute. Our ordinance would need to be amended to allow for that. The other piece of this is that the special events license has kind of changed over the years. It used to be that we would do one a year and I think it was for Ponce at Pounders. They did something, Governor's Winter Games in, in the winter. And we did not charge a fee because they were donating that money back to search it, for search and rescue equipment and whatnot. Kind of the advent of these establishments that, that now people, entities, that businesses, that hold licenses are going and serving at these other venues. I don't know if there's a discussion there, if the board does want to charge a fee for these types of licenses now. I think, you know, there's still that piece that it can be given to a fraternal nonprofit organization or the special events license falls under an entity that already holds an approved license, can take that license and use it elsewhere. So that's kind of part of the discussion too. We, I thought, if we're gonna be discussing this and if there's possible ordinance changes, I think we need to look at kind of the whole picture. So it's kind of twofold. Do you want to authorize more license, or more licenses per calendar year to entities that already hold licenses to have at these special events? And do you want to charge a fee for them?
Comments or discussion?
Just a quick question on, on this particular fee structure. We don't have a fee structure currently. Other, other counties do have fee structures or do not?
Yeah, I reached out to probably 10 different counties, and Lori can speak on this too. Yeah, they, there's, it's a variety of what they charge. But most of them do charge something because typically we have to publish the notice in all four legal newspapers, so there's a cost there. But yeah, most of the counties don't have a limit on how many they will issue for special events license, but they do, they will charge at least something, so.
Yeah, in that email I sent out the other day of the, what were there, five or six that responded that yes, they do have these? Only one did not have a fee. The rest all had a charge.
What's the range of fees?
There's a $75, a $50 a day, one has $200 a day, so it, it varies. And most were also no limit to the number of license that responded.
Typically, the venue doesn't apply for the one-day license, right?
The venue does not apply for the, the license, no. The person bartending it or, or selling the alcohol would need to apply for the license.
So the venue could have multiple events as long as different people are making the request?
The venue really doesn't have anything to do with it.
Okay.
Nope, it is, it's, it's entities that hold licenses that have been approved either, you know, by the county or a municipality, then that take that license and use it at the venue. So the venue really doesn't get involved at all. It's the, it's the entity that, with the license that comes to the finance office and makes those requests.
Is there anything in the ordinance that specifically addresses how many events on the same day they can have? In other words, if I've got two barns that wanna hold dances and wedding receptions and one bar says, hey, I'd like to do them both, is that allowed or just one on one day?
Yes, I think it's a twofold question. Yeah, I think that's allowed, but it would be a separate application. You would do one application for the, the one event and time being held. And then you would do, they would do a separate application for the second event, you know? So that would be two licenses.
They get one, they get three events a year?
Yep.
No matter where they're located?
The way that our ordinance reads, you know, an entity would only be allowed to have up to three in a calendar year.
Have we been seeing an increase in that in the past few years? That there, there's more of those requests and, and special permits going out? That this number, this number of three has kind of maybe hindered a company that holds a license to?
I mean, I've, I've been doing the liquor licenses now for the county for, I think, six years. And I think in just this last two years, we've seen an increase of events being held at a particular venue that doesn't currently have their own license to sell. And so, I mean, yeah, in these last two years, we've seen kind of an uptick with a certain business, you know, wanting to do more of this type of work. But they have to obtain a special license to do so because that venue doesn't have their own license.
Quick question to Marty. When you have these things, they're out in the county most of the time, right? The event centers are in the county. Have you had any issues with, with any of these events, serving liquor?
No. Actually, I think there's something, Bob, in zoning is that if they have, if they anticipate over 200 people, they're supposed to notify the office, but they have not created any issues for us. At this point.
My question, when this was written for three, there must have been a reason why they wanted to do three. Maybe it's been talked about and I didn't hear it.
I guess my thought, it would lead to, your question leads to one of my concerns, I guess. We talk about special events and it seems to be most to be like reunions or weddings or something. But does this open the door for a person to say, I wanna run a dance? And every weekend, I wanna run a dance? And now that entity can take their liquor license and move it to another spot for every weekend? If we leave it open, because if it qualifies, we have to be careful not to approve it. Because then we're making decisions, you know, it's okay, how come you denied mine because I made all the criteria? How'd you deny my license? And that's what I'm wondering where it came from. Would, does it allow somebody to not do? What is a special event considered, is what the question, and my question is, is, is it, is it an event for, to raise money for some person to put on something? Is it a wedding? Or is it somebody for profit to use their license to go to a place and put on an event every weekend? Which basically has moved their liquor license to another place without getting a second one. And so I don't know if that answers your question, and I'm not sure that's even the reason. Um, and so, I don't know if that answers your question, and I'm not sure that's even the reason, uh, it was put in. That doesn't mean I'm not opposed to opening them more up, but I, I think we have to also think about a little bit, is, are we opening up a little bit of a Pandora's box here? Now, somebody's gonna take advantage of it, and we don't have anything here to say, no, that's not what the intent was. Um, as long as they follow the rules, we could be open ourselves by not, not approving it, so, I don't know.
Commissioner?
Yeah.
It, it, that's a good comment. And, and when the events now are, are like weddings and special things, they, they basically police themselves.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but you know, I have, I have, uh, two municipalities, Volga, uh, who rents the auditorium, which creates issues, uh, at times for us, damage and, and underage drinking and that. And then also at Elkton, the community center, uh, they have, I don't know, half a dozen dances that they have there, and a, and a lot of these are coming out of other counties and other states, actually. Minnesota's coming in and renting the community center in, uh, in Elkton, which creates issues with underage drinking and those types of things. So, you have some valid requests, or some valid, uh, concerns there that I would have too with those when, once we open it up, you may have someone that wants to come in every month and do a dance, or every other month, or something like that.
Like for profit or something, they can charge five bucks at the door, they can charge there, and they're walking away with, you know, some profit, so...
So, when we have those special events in those communities, that puts, you know, extra patrol in that area just to make sure. And there's vandalism, I mean, I'm not gonna associate every dance with vandalism and that, but it's always a concern of extra patrol in those areas, and they've had incidences where there's vandalism, and something's got out of control and so forth, so, they're... So, it's a valid, you brought up a valid point.
Well, and, and if we, if we leave the three, if somebody wants to do an event or something like that, and they contact a liquor license holder, and they said they've already done their three, they could just move on to another license holder if they wanted to do that. Yeah. I mean, if, if they wanted to.
Yeah, I guess my thought was to at least put a limit on it, but we should increase off of three, um, because obviously there's a need for it, and I think the use is not being abused. Um, we just gotta make sure it doesn't get abused. So, I don't know if, if eight to ten is, is too many, um, I'm just throwing numbers out there. If, what are your thoughts, or if you wanna keep them at three, you know, you can say that too? And then we, I do charge a hundred bucks every time, uh, or two-hundred dollars every time they want, wanna use it. You know, I, again, I think if we get the fee too high, they're just gonna pass it on to the group that is doing it, whether it's the wedding, whether it's a fundraiser, you know, that, that's just gonna be passed on for the cost. So, I, I wanna make it to where it's, um, feasible to do it. Um, but also, we do have costs that we incur every time we do it, so we should, we should try to cover some of those costs.
Again, we'd be possibly looking at quite a few of these before us at every meeting, in, in the summertime at least. We'd have that in addition to those costs for publications and those publications. I, I could see some applications coming in late and wanting us to, uh, make an exception to, to get publishing done earlier, or later, or too late to publish, before their event. Uh, it might be a can of worms there to figure out to people that, or let them know, you, you gotta be in here at least, I don't know how many days early to get publication and get it on our council. Is that gonna be thirty days, or is it gonna be sixty days, or what's it gonna be in order to get it on our agenda to approve it?
It's at least thirty days. By the time, you know, we, we get that scheduled, to get it noticed and whatnot, so yeah, I mean, it's, it's usually... Sometimes we can do a quicker turnaround on it, but it has to be noticed so many days in advance of our meeting as well, so, yeah. Thirty days is, is pretty safe.
Do we wanna possibly put in a, a sixty-day application period before? Just to make sure, I mean, if you're having a wedding, you're gonna pretty much know sixty days ahead of time that you're gonna try and put together a place to have the reception, so, do we wanna end our ordinance somewhere, say, an application that's be filed sixty days before the event?
I don't think so. I think that's, uh, that's the responsibility of the people holding the event. I don't think we need to have anything, I mean, I'd hate to put in sixty days and somebody, you know, comes to us with, in plenty of time to still get it noticed, thirty days, and then we can't do it because you didn't meet a time limit. I think as long as they can meet our time limit, I think we're fine. And we're pretty honest with them. If they come the week before and say, we wanna do this, you're, uh, too late. So, I don't think we need a time limit on it.
Well, if you were to be proactive and say thirty days, that's reasonable.
I guess from experience of doing it and working with these, um, you know, folks that wanna do the event and stuff, I mean, as soon as somebody knows they wanna hold an event and they want alcohol there, they contact whoever they want to do it right away, and those businesses usually contact and work with me like immediately. Stacy's really good to work with. I mean, I've never had an issue of timing, other than our annual renewal with some of those entities of handing their stuff in late, but that's up to you guys.
Probably, so probably not an issue, really.
No.
Not a problem, so...
I don't know if I can ask a question or not, but I'll throw it out there. Um, if you were to amend the ordinance and increase and make changes, when would that go in effect that it would be okay for an entity to now, you know, submit? Or, or would this not, or would we not do anything, like it wouldn't take effect until 2024? Like, would it take effect right away, or no?
Well, I think we have to, we have to go through, uh, ordinance, first reading, second reading.
Okay, so you do the first reading?
Publication, first reading, second reading, yep. We would be amending it.
Not immediately, but we're probably looking at at least a couple months.
And then I think it's twenty days after publication.
That somebody can refer it? Is that referable? Not an ordinance, is it? Okay. Yeah, so...
All ordinances are referable.
Are they? You said are, or not?
Are.
Are, yeah, okay, so that's the twenty days is the chance for somebody to refer it? Yep, okay. So, it's gonna take us a little bit to, uh, you know, a month for sure, first and second public hearing, then the notice and stuff, so, couple months. So, the applications that are in front of us with the ordinance the way it is, we have to enforce the way it is, unfortunately, with the one group wanting three more, and they've already had two. We can approve one, we just can't approve those other two the way it sits now. If we make adjustments and it goes through, then we would have that ability to do that. Comments, thoughts? Um, this is kind of still discussion, but, uh, we have a consensus of what, moving forward, if something we would wanna make changes to, or do we wanna leave it the same?
I could see us making some changes to it. I guess I'd like a recommendation from staff. This has been an issue the last year or two, probably more prevalent this year than last year. Uh, what would be a reasonable number to, to handle what you have for your question now? Would it be six? Would it be twelve? Any idea from staff, or where we should look at a number? I'm thinking six, but... Seven's in between. Uh, six is doubling what we have now. Yeah, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that, but I also think there needs to be a fee to recover costs for publication, so I don't know what that fee is for, put that ordinance together, we at least need to cover that in staff time.
And you guys looked at fees, you guys looked at fees from, uh, from other counties. I mean, you mentioned anywhere from fifty to two-hundred. If we split kind of a hundred-dollar fee, I don't think that's unreasonable, but what would, what are your guys' thoughts on something like that, Lori or John?
Yeah, a hundred dollars, I don't think is unreasonable at all to get this type of license. I mean, they're able to sell liquor, beer, wine, you know, and we publish it for them, do all the notices. So, no, I don't think a hundred dollars is unreasonable at all. And qu, and quite honestly, I don't think a hundred and fifty is, is too bad either, but that's totally up to you.
Again, I, I like those recommendations simply because I, I don't take those applications. I don't do that work, so I don't know what it involves, but obviously it does take time and effort and cost us money. We need to recover that.
Well, do we wanna put together a consensus here of moving forward, and we can direct, um, ordinance change, or we'll go through that process, because you probably should, if we're gonna start the process, we should try to at least get it figured out now, so we can save some time, um, if we all are kinda on the same page. So, I mean, we don't have anything set up for, for action items, it's more discussion, but I think if we take a consensus, we could then instruct, uh, staff to put together that, that change, ordinance change, and then go through the process, so...
I guess my suggestion would be the hundred and fifty dollars, since that seems to be the number coming from staff, and also at, uh, sex licenses. Be my suggestion.
Yeah.
I think that's, sounds about, about right, coming from the people that do it.
So, the only thing I was thinking though, was this entity that we're dealing with now would already be at five in a, in a time, and still not even into August yet, is six enough where, um, that we're gonna run into the same problem here with this group, or, you know, I don't know. Does it hurt to go to eight? Does it hurt to go to ten, um, and allow them to continue to do that? Cause they're, in this situation, they're gonna be out within one more, if, if we, you know, if, with the three that came in, we're gonna deny two, but if we had this at six, they don't still only have one more for the rest of the year, so, I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
My thoughts are, it does prevent somewhat what you brought up earlier, of having a venue that I can use for ten weekends out of the summer, host, uh, my own, uh, event, so...
Yeah, no, that's understandable.
Six kind of eliminates that.
All right. Everybody good with six and a hundred and fifty per license, per license, right? Per request, per application?
Yeah.
All right, we can get that process going?
If, uh, if they'd have six events, they still gotta come in front of the commission every time. So, if their problem develops, I'm looking at Marty here, if a problem develops, you know, we can say no, or yes.
Yeah, you have every right to either approve or deny that, um, that application. Yep. And the applicant, um, always comes in, you know, to, for the public hearing, so you would hear from him, you can ask him, ask him any questions you wanted.
And just to verify with Sheriff, if there is underage drinking or something like that, um, it goes on the licensee that is affected with that, and that could affect their, their liquor license under there, correct? Just to verify that.
All right, well, let's get that started then, if we can, Stacy, so... All right, uh, next on the agenda is the Commission Director's report.
The June plus analysis, uh, percentage was at forty-three percent. Uh, that is still higher than our ten-year average of thirty-six point six percent, so we'll continue to monitor that as we get closer here to the end of the year. Um, I do need, so we had a couple things come up. The Sioux Valley Commissioners Meeting is the same Wednesday, August ninth, as the Conservation District Tour. The Conservation District Tour, it looks like, is, um, kind of having a, a twelve-thirty lunch, and as you know, the Sioux Valley Commissioners of the Ten County Meeting usually starts at, it does start at noon. So, um, wondering, I do need to RSVP for both of those, so I don't know if, if some of you would attend one or the other. I mean, in looking at it, um, there is the tour of the King Fisher Fish Farm south of Brookings at ten-thirty. So, if wanted to skip the lunch and then head from there down to Flandrew is the location down in Moody County for Ten County Meeting, um, could take off from there and head to Moody County, and I think would get there in time for, for noon, miss the lunch with the Conservation District. But those two things are kind of over, overlapping a little bit, so, um, either way, I need to RSVP for both of those events.
What time does the Ten County start?
Uh, noon.
Everybody's thoughts?
The fishery is the last stop, isn't it, before lunch?
Yes, yep.
And that stop is scheduled for ten-thirty?
Ten-thirty, yep. I did reserve the Durango too, thinking that if, if, you know, people wanted to, we could, usually there's a beta bus that, there's a, you know, the beta bus provides transportation from site to site on the Conservation District Tour. If you wanted to take the Durango and kind of follow along, then could take off after the, the fish farm tour and head. There, if you wanted to try to do both, um...
I, I'd like to try and do both. I like to stay with the Ten County meetings.
Are you thinking if we just left, uh, King Fisher and went south, then for dinner, or we...
We'd have time.
Conservation District's not gonna be put out that we have another conflict that day, Larry?
We just gotta let them know for planning purposes for their meal.
Right, yeah.
Well, yeah, it's planning for their lunch, we won't...
I'll do the Conservation Tour.
Okay.
Skip the Ten County.
Sure.
I'll do both.
Okay. And then you'll eat at the Ten County? Okay. Sean, what?
I'll do...
I'm just gonna do the Conservation Tour.
Okay. Sean, do you know what you would like to do?
I, I'll stick with the Conservation District.
Okay. Okay. And then I did hand out, um, four H Achievement Days is coming up next week, and I did hand out, um, kind of your calendar of events there this morning for you to take a look at. Um, usually they reach out to you individually for serving at the barbecue, which is usually Thursday, Thursday evening, so... Uh, then other than that, uh, just the upcoming dates is the only other thing that I have. I don't know that there's anything, something is new, July twenty-ninth, uh, it's this Saturday, Korean War Defense Veteran Appreciation Day, nine to three, out at the BCOAC. Um, I think it passed that informally, information along from, from Bob Hill to you as well. We did do that, uh, resolution at our last meeting. Um, August second, Wednesday, there is a South Dakota Resilient Community Event, State of the Community, ten to one. I don't have a location on that yet, but if you, um, do wanna go, just reach out to me, and I can get that information for you. Um, uh, other than that, I think everything else has kind of been on there. Fall convention, as soon as you know if you want a hotel room for one night, both nights, or neither of those nights, um, please let me know that, so as we get a little bit closer, I'll be changing our, our reservations and whatnot for that. So, if you, whenever you know, please, please let me know. And that is all I have.
All right. State's Attorney's Office Report. Commissioners Report. Commissioner Vanderwall.
Thank you. Just, uh, one event, uh, July twelfth, at... Meeting in Brookings, good crowd.
All right. Commissioner Bartley?
On July nineteenth, the B.C. had a meeting and a half, and also had a presentation from, uh, a gentleman from Sioux Falls who's, uh, promoting a one-cent tail, sales tax for counties. It would be a, uh, a tax that would be voted on by the residents, and it would be for special projects. You could not build the project until the tax was collected, so if you had an eight-million-dollar project, either, well, it would either be for cities or, or counties. You had an eight-million-dollar project, uh, and you put it to the voters, and voters approved it, you would have a one-cent sales tax that would end when the eight million dollars was raised, and the project then could be built, so, so, it's, it's a pay-as-you-go type of a situation. You could put a multiple projects list together that could, uh, could total whatever amount of money you think the tax could support, and as each project, as your per, let's say you had three projects, eight, six, and three million, and that's, you would prioritize, say, okay, we're gonna do the three first, and I wanna r, reach the tax, re, reach that three million, you could start that project. Then it starts over, and when it gets to the eight, you can do that project, and so it's, uh, you, you could prioritize it. There's a lot of, uh, a lot of details that need to be ironed out in the proposal, but they're going to bring that to the, uh, legislature this year and see... and see what traction it might get, so, anyway, it was interesting presentation. That's my report.
Sounds good. Commissioner Jensen.
Uh, July twentieth, uh, basically it was, um, level of our surplus, uh, dollars of a percentage what we, we needed, uh, otherwise, that's all I had also.
Alright, Commissioner Haasler.
Uh, to continue, I had one we attended the Brookings Economic with Commissioner Bartley, that is my report.
Well, I had a few more than you guys, so. Uh, on the twelfth, um, we, I luncheon. CPOD meeting at Brookings Health, uh, on the twentieth, we had E-nine-one-one meeting where we passed our budget. Um, and then, um, had a, on the twenty-fourth, had a, had a meeting with the landowner, and that's about it, so. Alright, any other comments?
On number twelve, executive session in accordance to South Dakota Codified Law one dash two-five dash two, numbers one, three, and four, is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Some who.
Second.
Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye. Pose same sign, motion carries. We, afterwards, we will come back in, um, and go through budget discussions. Right now, we'll take a five-minute break.
Dana, are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I need a motion to come out of executive session. Your second?
Aye.
Discussion, you're in on, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is budget discussions.
Okay, so I've been crunching some numbers. You want to take one of those, hand those down? I will put this up. Okay, so after our budget discussions in June, made those changes, basically we were about 87,000, actually in the black and the general fund, and we were about 1.3 million still in the red and the highway fund. The other thing that was messed up was the building fund, the 301 fund, because we took the courthouse roof and the generator project for this building next year, we're going to take that out of commission projects. That reduced our expense in the 301 fund quite a bit. So I had to, that's probably the easiest one to look at is that bottom, those bottom rows. I basically took some liberties and put some additional dollars into some of those funds. You can see the fund description there on the left, moving across, basically to get that to balance with revenue, with our anticipated tax revenue coming in, because we do levy, have a levy for that fund. So that fund then balances with those changes. The highway fund, right above that, the board had approved like 22,000 for Brian to have some seasonal part-time help. I know it looks weird that there's actually 13,000 was reduced. I know it looks weird that there's actually thirteen thousand was reduced, but there was a payout that got put into the budget twice accidentally. So salaries was already kind of overstated, so we actually ended up in the red there, or to the good thirteen thousand in salaries. Have some increase in, in taxes. And then basically to balance that fund, I took out the overlay projects. Brian had a dollar amount of about one point three six for the overlay projects. Took those out then to balance that fund. That's a discussion to have with the commission if you want to take one of those overlay projects out, both of those, none of those, increase the general fund transfer to the highway fund. That's a discussion to have. Basically, I did that, so we'd be at, we'd be at a balanced budget. And then in the general fund, you can see we had some finance office salary changes noted there. Basically, to get it to balance after those changes, I just upped contingency, just sort of as a placeholder number. And then I did have to tweak some revenue just by eighty-two dollars, because when I had to do that less five percent, so both in the general fund and the building fund where we have those tax levies, you have to set aside five percent of your, your appropriations by statute. So to get to that five percent number, I just had to do some minor tweaking of things to get it to balance. So it is with these changes that you see in front of you, the entire budget is balanced, but still some discussion to be had, I guess, on what the commission would like to do moving forward. If there's some additional changes that need to be made or that you want to make, we can certainly do that.
I think the largest one in here is obviously the repairs and maintenance highway department and the overlay projects. Have you got the original budget that showed us the overlays? Can you pull that up?
And that itemized cost, right?
The itemized cost, yeah. The overlays, the chip seal, the equipment. There we go. That's what I'm looking at. So as we looked at this in particular, and we talked about the one point three short, the only place that I felt comfortable is to, to, to look at the two overlay projects, putting them off a year. That would give us the ability to go ahead and buy the motor grader, the dump truck, pickup truck, if we can get one, at the same time, keep all our, our chip seal projects in place. At this particular time, if we were to try and move some funds, obviously we'd go to the overlay. Whether we were to try and do one or both is a discussion.
Everybody starts. No, go ahead. I was just seeing.
Correct. Mike and I discussed this last week, and if, if we were to choose to, to pick a motor grader that, or pick a piece of equipment that we'd take out, it would probably be the motor grader. Each of those, or particularly that two thousand eleven motor grader has around sixty-five hundred hours on it. Last year, if you guys recall, we did stick some money into a newer one to the tune of about sixty thousand bucks for a transmission. But I feel, I mean, pending any, obviously hard winter we had last year, but that would be one piece of equipment we could probably defer. And then I guess if I was to choose one or the other, upon analysis of both of those roads, county road seventeen and county road nineteen, nineteen was particularly damaged when we had the flooding. If you guys recall out there, I'm sure many of you guys have driven that road now, the shoulders are in, are in need of help. So I guess if we were going to eliminate one or the other, it'd be seventeen and, and do something with nineteen. Seventeen's seeing some fatigue, but not near as bad as nineteen.
What about chip sealing? Is that something you want to continue on, your, your path on, on stuff?
I think the chip seal, obviously, is our, our cheapest route of maintenance. Keep in mind, that doesn't, that thirty thousand dollars a mile does not include, you know, the, the crack sealing or any of the other repair work that we, we would do. But the biggest cost, obviously, for the chip seal is performing the project. But much like Mike and I, you know, talked when we met, our prices have doubled on those type of projects. It used to be around sixteen thousand a mile, we can, we could do a chip seal, we're looking at thirty now, just because of the cost of oil. But I have also, in lieu of that, I mean, we've, we've cut back quite a ways on just the sheer amount of miles.
And I guess that's what, what my concern is, moving forward down the road, is with the budget right now balanced, we, we're taking three million and adding to it from reserves, just to balance the budget, which, not a big fan of. However, the costs have continued to go up. Our, we're fairly aggressive on our chip sealing and our overlays and different stuff like that. Is that something we maybe need to visit again to say, look, you know, maybe instead of every seven years, or, and I, and I don't know the exact numbers, I'm just throwing them out here, that a chip seal happens on every four years on, on every road, or overlays every ten years? I mean, we, we, I think we do a really good job with our county roads. I hear a ton of compliments, they're in good shape, they're maintained well, in my opinion, and from what I hear. But there's going to be a time here where it's getting too expensive and our budget isn't allowed to keep up the aggressive maintenance of our roads. And so this is where, you know, do we add one point three six million from our general fund to reserves to get the overlay to keep up the project? But now we're going to be at almost four and a half of reserves just to balance our budget, and I don't think that's sustainable. I don't want it to be, I shouldn't say I don't want it to be, I don't think it is. I don't want us to, to drop down on our reserves so much just to keep up the aggressive nature of, of what we're doing. So I guess I would, I would say one thing coming out of this is we maybe need to look at that again and see where that, because costs have doubled almost from what we were doing, maybe we just can't do it as often and as much, but we gotta, we gotta kind of stay within our confines of our, of our budget.
I agree. One thing I have done since you guys brought me on board in Brookings County is we have gone from a roughly five to six-year chip seal rotation to, I'm pushing some out to eight and nine. And obviously, that shows on our, this, you know, we used to do forty miles every year. You know, we're looking at not even twenty this coming year, and roughly spending about the same amount of dollars. And same thing with our overlay, you know, we're, if we do cut it down to four miles, I mean, do I think we can get by? Yeah, I do, I, I honestly do. Our, our, like you mentioned, our roads are in, in fairly good shape, but I think the, the, the chip seal on those, you know, roads, I think is essential to keep them in good shape. The overlay, I mean, we can cut back, back on some, and, and I, and I've analyzed those also as, as just looking to the roads that absolutely need it. The overlay that we're performing in, in twenty twenty-three here, if you guys have driven on county road thirty-eight, we've, we put quite a bit of money into just patching every year to get by. And, and now, now we're looking at doing a full overlay on that, which is eight miles, but, you know, that's what I, my concern is, we put so much money into just patching these roads where we'd probably be better off just doing a whole project just to save money. So I mean, I would be fine with, with cutting county roads seventeen out. After I spoke with Mike last week, we did go out and, and took a, a nice, slow drive just analyzing both of these. But I, I feel county road nineteen's in a state to where if we do let it go, it's going to cost us more in the end. And the, the same with the motor grader, I, I mean, Mike's, Mike and I sat down and looked at each one of these items. The chip seal, I feel best bang for your buck as far as maintenance. Another item that I took a look at, we could probably, I mean, if we eliminated the motor grader, county road seventeen and cut our gravel in half, we'd get there. We've had a fairly aggressive gravel plan. There'd be years that I would buy, you know, it, it depends on whether or not the crusher's going to be in the pit. I, I don't want to have to pay for them to make a special trip on our gravel, so I, I try to catch them while they're there. And we're getting to the point now to where, in the future, I'm not going to need to buy the, that sheer amount of gravel, because we've got our roads covered. And it'd just be maintenance. So I mean, if we, I, I put quite a bit of thought into this, just looking at this to, to kind of come up, come up with that number, and, and those three particular things, I think, would be a good compromise.
Brian, at, by the end of the fall, how many ton of gravel would you have left over coming into next year?
I mean, depending on what we can get hauled. We started this year with right around about a hundred and twenty thousand ton on the ground that we had bought, and we're looking at probably hauling close to, probably half to three quarters, depending on what we can get, what we can get done. And then to finish up our, our system would be, next year would be our, kind of our final year, and then following that, we might only be looking at purchasing, you know, ten to twenty thousand ton. Whereas I think next year, if we, if we bought forty thousand ton of gravel, I, I think we can kind of finish off covering our main line gravels and then go to a, just a maintenance standpoint, to where, place gravel where we need it, where these last few years, we've been gravelling miles of road.
I, I like it. I think it makes sense. The...
Totals, I mean.
The, the, the numbers total, they work. Yep. And, you know, if we can hold off on seventeen, if you feel that's okay, and we can keep the motor grader going for another year, I think you're right on, on the tons. If you got a one twenty-five, you're going to use half, roughly sixty, add another forty, you got a hundred there to start the year again, probably is not going to be shortchanging you.
We'll still be, if we eliminate the motor grader, then we don't, we have to reduce revenue by a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, because we will not be selling a motor grader. So really, we're still about eighty-five thousand dollars short between, because we're going to add in, you have to add in six hundred and eighty. We're balanced right now, six hundred and eighty plus the one thirty-five is, we're at eight fifteen. If we take the motor grader out, and then we take half of the gravel, which is two eighty, leaves us with eighty-five thousand that we're still short.
But we have options, though, for that. We can, I mean, obviously, you can't, general fund, you're raising the contingency up ninety-one, but that obviously can't...
This is two oh one fund.
Right, exactly.
I'm talking specifically two oh one fund.
I understand, exactly. So that we could add eighty-five thousand dollars to the transfer from three million to three point eighty-five, right?
Yes.
Okay. What other options do we have?
Brian, did you have, in this year's budget, did you have two pickups in there this year?
Correct.
Have you received those?
I have not received them. Same thing with the, the truck I had budgeted for this year, we will not be receiving a truck.
So that'll stay in the fund, that'll stay in the highway fund, though, right? Two oh one?
What? No, no, nothing, no, no. Any money that's in two oh one stays in two oh one.
So we haven't spent, haven't bought those three vehicles?
It rolls into fund balance.
Two oh one fund?
Yes.
What do we have in fund balance of the two oh one right now?
I'd have to bring that up. Well, was that in Lori's report from today?
Can we use that fund balance to balance?
I will tell you that I'm very concerned about being, having a negative fund balance rollover at year end, because of revenues being overstated this year versus the expense that we have coming in. So I would prefer that we not use fund, highway fund balance at this point until we have a better idea of where things are at. I mean, I think that needs to wait a year or two to, to get that fund kind of back to where it needs to be. And the simple thing is, if we have about eighty-five thousand, the simple thing would be, okay, you could up that transfer, reduce contingency eighty-five, we still balance in the general fund. I think. I'm pretty sure.
That, that would seem reasonable to me, because we raised it by ninety-one anyway, right?
Correct. Just sort of as a plug number, because we needed, I needed something to balance, and I needed, didn't have direction from the board on how you wanted, where you would want to spend that money. So, yeah, I just put it in contingency, because we reduced contingency quite a bit, based on usage in the past, you know, handful of years or so.
I like, I like Brian's efforts on trying to get as close to balancing. I think we can handle the eighty-five on there. So I like, what you had just said is raising that, or, our reserves transfer from general fund to three million eighty-five thousand, reducing the contingency in general fund by eighty-five thousand. But then keep everything balanced, and we can do what Brian suggested.
I think that's a good compromise to use that eighty-five thousand, it's a lot easier than one point three million.
I would agree.
Yes.
Only drawback in, in the entire process is seventeen gets put off a year, so there's a motor grader.
And we are not doing any bridges this coming year, correct? We pulled those out, or?
We pulled them out. We pulled all of the big grant, both revenue and expense, out of the budget, because we really, we don't know until we know, basically, that we've been approved for some things, we don't know when they're going to come. Now with the state saying that they're going to front seventy-five percent of, of projects, I think what we do is if something does happen to come to fruition, and we end up bidding something, and we know we're going to have expenses in twenty twenty-four, then we look at it then, and we'll have to probably do some supplemental budget stuff. But it would only be then for twenty-five percent of the cost of the project, because we're no longer, we no longer need to budget for a hundred percent of these projects, and we shouldn't be, because we'll be getting, we can offset that with the revenue that's coming in.
Right. You can budget for the expense, but... but we're going to also budget for seventy-five percent of the revenue.
Right.
Yeah. So the expense will be there, but not, but more revenue now.
We had also talked, I think you had mentioned it, Commissioner Kogman, at one point, using some funds from our special project to do the motor grader. With the hundred and thirty, we would get on a trade value of some sort. We're down to about three-hundred-and-twenty. We would take out a special project if we decide to do that next year.
How do we find out availability of these? Because it seems like we've, we've struggled here with these, the pickups, the dump truck, all that stuff. We budget for them and they sit there. And how do we know when something's coming available?
The yellow equipment is a lot easier to get a build date. Where these, you know, the trucks, the pickups, obviously, they're a larger purchased item. It's hard to get a build date, whereas a motor grader, I'm getting told six to eight months and we can receive our, you know, yellow equipment. Whereas, because these dealerships get so many build slots. And if we, if we would put our name on one, the predictability is way higher than a truck. You know, we're not the only county that's been waiting on a truck. The truck market is just, private and public has just been in ruin. Same with the, with the pickups, the vehicles.
I guess my concern is we throw another sixty thousand in a transmission, then the old one, or another hundred thousand, we're better off spending the three-twenty for a new one. So anyway, that could be addressed with the commission later.
All right, anything else on the budget there? Stacy, kind of see where we're going at?
Yeah, yep, makes sense to me.
Okay. Any comments from staff? Lori, anything there? Jen?
I just hope at some point in time, these costs might come back to realistic price.
I think we need to make sure we take action on whether we use special project funds or at least authorize it so we get on that list for a grader sooner than later.
All right. Anything else on budget? Otherwise, next on the agenda is adjournment. Is there a motion to approve or a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.